Good evening and welcome to the June 12, 2017 Board of Selectments Meeting. Mr. Mayo, do we have public participation for this evening?
Yes, we do. We have Ms. Annie DuValle of Peon Boulevard. Come on.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'll keep it brief. I'm the parent of three little boys. We live on Peon Boulevard, great little neighborhood over by the Dulver School. And on Sunday afternoon, May 21st, my six-year-old son, a kindergartner here in town, was riding his bike in our neighborhood, something he does all the time along with a lot of other children. And he was bitten by our neighbor's 61-pound boxer dog. The wound was in his upper torso. It did draw blood, but fortunately, he's okay. The incident was unprovoked and the owner did take full responsibility, acknowledging her dog was off a leash and off her property. And my concern is that she received only a $25 fine from the town, and that's according to the bylaws. In my opinion, it's a slap in the wrist, and the fine was for having an unleashed dog, not actually for the injury that her dog caused to my son. So, our animal control officer, Ken Stash, was responsive in this case, and he made it clear that he was following the laws. This is what was stated in the bylaws, and there were no additional fines or other punishments for any injuries resulting from unprovoked dog attacks. It was just the unleashed dog bylaw that he was following. So, I am interested in changing this because I do think it's important that dog owners can be incentivized to keep their dogs under control and protect innocent children riding around in their own neighborhood on a bike. So, I understand that there is another group reviewing the bylaws here in town, and I do plan to work with them as well, but I just want to make this group aware of my efforts to make a change in this case. I do propose modifying the law as it stands to add a significantly more substantial financial penalty, certainly more than $25, to incentivize any dog owner to keep their dog under control and prevent any attack, such as the one that happened to my son, from happening again. So, I appreciate your attention in this matter. I hope you take this issue as seriously as I do. And I realize it's too late to change anything in my particular case, but I really wouldn't want any other parent in town to feel the way I do should their child receive an injury like the one my child received from an unleashed dog off its property. So, I welcome any feedback that you have, either now or privately after the meeting, but thank you for your attention to this matter. Thanks.
So, the board doesn't know, Ms. DuValle has been in contact with Dan Lieber, the chairman of the Bylaw Review Committee. They're going to take this up, and will be bringing that back as part of their package, I believe.
Very good. Thank you. Let's move on to item number two of the agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular board meeting minutes from May 22nd, 2017. So, second, on paper. I oppose. Thank you. Our next item is item number three, presentation action items, setting of the fiscal year 2008 water and sewer rates. We have Carol and Greg to give us the presentation, and Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. You have before tonight, setting of the fiscal year 2018 water and sewer rates. I provided you with a memo and the calculation sheets for the rate setting. The Advisory Board of Public Works has recommended these rates at their last meeting, and with that, I will go through the rates. Recommendation is for $6.95 per 100 cubic feet of water. The sewer rate recommendation is $10.90 per 100 cubic feet for sewer. The combined rate increase is 4.692%. The Public Works Water and Sewer Divisions, self-sustaining enterprise funds, so they don't get, receive anything from the tax levy. Overall, our average bill is lower than Melrose and Reading after the discount is taken. Our consumption is now lower than it was in 1959, which is very important. When consumption declines, revenues are negatively impacted. We utilize reserves to cover capital, warrant articles, emergencies, and consumption shortfalls. The reserves in this rate setting are extremely low, and I'll go through that in some more detail. So, we need to have sufficient reserves for now and the future. My recommendation on reserves would be, on the water side, at least $1 million, and on the sewer side, at least $1 million. Example is, when we get to the reserve amount, keep in mind the Green Street water emergency, we had that break. That was $135,000 request during mid-year that we needed for that emergency. The combined increase for the average user is $86.40 for the year and $21.60 per quarter after the discount. If you compare it to buying eight 16-ounce bottles of water to obtain a gallon, you'd spend between $10.40 and $12.00 for that water. If you bought a, when you compare that to our rate, which includes sewer, so it's water and sewer, it's 2.15, okay? Substantially different. Probably the best deal in town, although people may argue with that. It is definitely the best deal in town. The key when we set the rate is you need to be able to cover the entire operating budget. And we set that. The MWRA water assessment represents 44% of the budget. This year's DPW budget increased approximately 2.296%. And the MWRA, when you add in the MWRA portion of it, of the assessment, the increase of the assessment, the budget increase was 9.452%. On the sewer side, the MWRA represents 77.35% of the budget. This year's budget increase for just the DPW portion was 0.137%, and the budget increase with the MWRA additional amount included was 3.714%. The, as I said, the proposed water and sewer bill is less than Melrose and Reading, and I'll go through that a little more. It's slightly higher than Stonem. Paying bills on time, and this is key, and we've mentioned this every year, we want people to take the discount. What happens if you don't, and you wait 60 days? You will, one, lose your discount, which on the average bill is $53.55. You would be charged 14% interest, which would come out to $49.98, and you would be charged a $10 demand for that quarter. So, for 60 days, it would be $113.53 that you would pay, that there would be no need to pay. If you go to, if you go to page one of the memo from the Advisory Board, you'll see the rate recommendation at the top. You'll see the sewer rate, flat rate recommendation. The sewer flat rate is based on an average homeowner's sewer bill calculated through the rate. Why is there a sewer flat rate? There are residents in town that have a well but are tied into the sewer system, and we need to bill them for sewer. We do offer to meet at that well, which we would prefer. There aren't a lot of residents with that situation, but there are some, but we can't force them to do that. So, we will calculate a bill based on the average user. It could be high, it could be low. We don't know. When you go to page three of the memo, it cites the four things you'll need to vote on tonight. One is the water rate, one is the sewer rate, the sewer flat rate, and the septic disposal rate. Septic disposal rate is, we have a disposal site that is, if someone came in with a septic truck to pump out a septic system, they could dump here, and they do get charged. If someone had an IV that needed to dispose of waste, they could do that, but they would be charged, okay? On page four, which is the most important page, the, I'm going to draw your attention to three things on this page. In the top part under the water rate, you will see a box, and it has $6.35 that it starts out with in the left column. That is our current water and sewer rate. And when you go across, you can see the year-end projected earnings would be a negative $404,000 and change if we kept that rate. And it would, at the end of the year, it would be a negative $344,000 and change, and that would be using up all the reserve that would be there. And when you go to the $6.90, you still have a negative year-end estimated balance of $12,000 and change. So, the first point that you get to both numbers in the black, which is what is needed, is $6.95. And you'll see there, which is important, remember I said I estimate that, one, we need $1 million in a reserve, and, two, we need to, and you look at that Green Street break of $135,000. If everything worked out perfect, which obviously they don't, we would have a reserve of $83,000 and change at the end of the year, fiscal year 18. The sewer side is the same thing. The current rates, $10.70. In the year-end estimated balance, you would have a negative $133,000 and change. It would, there still would be a $36,000 reserve at the end of the fiscal year. When you go to $10.85, it would be a $25,000 negative year-end balance, and when you use the reserve, it would be $71,000 and change, positive $71,000. So, the $10.90 brings you to an $11,000 a year-end estimated balance and $107,000 reserve. When you look at down below, Reading, Reading's bill, and this is based on next year's rate, will be $2,420 for an average bill. They do not provide a discount. Stonem will be $1,764. They do not provide a discount. Melrose has not set their rates when we checked last week. They will be doing that shortly. Their bill, a bill in Melrose based on last year's numbers, would be $2,685 on their bill, and that would be without a discount. They do have some discounts for different groups, but there is no discount for the majority. Our bill would be, after the discount, is $1,927.80 on an average bill. One of the things that's different between us and Stonem is that we operate a treatment plant, they do not, and after that, I wouldn't want to guess on what's different, I guess. I'll be kind. And with that, any questions you have? I'll be glad to answer.
Members of the board, any questions?
Mr. Stinson, if I understand correctly, we're basically looking at like three factors that are in play. One is the MWRA's budgeting, one is our town water consumption, and the third is the sewer flow, correct? Those are the...
Yeah, and the fourth one would be the town portion of the budget, too, but this year was not really a factor.
So, in terms of looking at this, you know, when I first looked at the material, I saw a 4.6%, 4.10% increase. It seemed like a lot, but then, when I kind of pulled back and looked at, pulled back the layers and looked at it, it seems like a lot of this is really determined by those factors. So, there isn't, there isn't a whole lot of give in terms of what we can do. Am I understanding correctly, or do we have more discretion than present?
And this year, with our percentages being down so low, no. And remember, we've already voted the budget in town. The, I think the big thing to understand is that, let's say that you said, hey, we're going to vote a lower rate and put those two columns of reserve, the reserve discussion in the red. That means two things. One, you would not get an approved tax rate for the year, and that was brought up at one point in time. And second, the MWRA has the authority to take the money off the cherry sheet. So, they're going to get their money no matter which way, you know?
I think just to clarify to you, those reserves, they have to be maintained separately, correct?
Yes.
There's a water reserve and a sewer reserve, and they're really quite independent that way.
Correct.
So, the idea is, it's not, so if we have an emergency, basically, and we exhaust our reserves, then it's tax levy? That's what picks up the difference there?
Correct. Yep. And two other things to remember, we're going to end up with a very small reserve next year. Let me tell you, give you an example of some projects that went. One that's ongoing and one that went before town meeting. We voted this year at town meeting to complete the last two sewer pumping stations, to rehab them, and then, and that project was $971,000. If we had two more coming in the next year, obviously, they wouldn't be done, no matter how bad they were, because we wouldn't have the funding to do that unless you raise the rate to cover that cost. A water main project that we're doing now is about $500,000, okay? If I was to come in next year with that same water main project, and that was the cost, the rate would go up 65 cents to cover that project. That's just one project.
And currently, we're at capacity, basically, we're nearing capacity in terms of our pumping stations, correct?
Yeah, we're limited in what we can pump at Crystal Lake, our water supply. It's set by a water withdrawal registration, and when you factor in all of the operating requirements, there's only so much that we can get out of there. We try to maximize it each year. But one of the things that happened last year, we had a drought, as you all remember. Unfortunately, with that drought, in order to make sure that Crystal Lake was safe, we stopped pumping in August from Crystal Lake. And as a result, we pumped a lot more from the MWRA than we normally do. So, that drove that assessment up because it's based, the assessment's based on last year's water consumption. It's not consumption as you go along. So, it's the calendar year of water consumption for last year.
So, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Stinson, really, MWRA dictates the terms, so the more our conservation efforts, as good as they are, really hurts us in the back end?
Conservation is, I guess, it goes both ways. On the, on hand, I want to sell as much water as I can with any product. The more you sell, okay, the cheaper the product gets. On the other hand, we're, we have requirements from DEP and under the Water Management Act that you're supposed to maintain lower levels on water consumption. Back in the, probably early, mid-'80s, we pumped about, between the MWRA and town, about a billion gallons a year. Last year, we were at 728 million, and we've been down to 660 million a couple years ago. So, it's dropped substantially. Thank you.
Anyone else on board at the moment wants to speak before I let them speak again?
Just super briefly, and I, you know, every time you come, Rick, I feel guilty that we have these water pumps. And I think we should be bringing our own, which I try to do with them, because Wakefield water tastes delicious, too. It's, you know, it's great water. But I think getting that word out, really, that the more we use the water and we have safe water, could ultimately end up reducing the numbers a little bit because what Ed was saying and Tony, you know, it's not exactly parallel, but that, you know, with Chapter 70 funding, our hands are tied and get frustrated. I think the MWRA, it's even worse. We really have no power over that. And thank you for making it as complicated as it is. It's quite clear the way you laid it out. So, thank you for doing that.
Hi, Mr. Stinson. Thanks for coming. Just a quick question I can, too. So, I made a note on the consumption lower than in 1959. Do we have, we must have consumption tables, right, that go through the last...
Hundred years.
Okay. Does it, have we, I mean, obviously, the town has grown, I would think substantially since 1959. It can't just be conservation, right? I mean, we have a lot more, I think we have a lot more people in town. We have 26,000 and change right now, so...
Well, I looked at the census before coming down here. It's under 25,000. Back in the '60s, I believe, or early '70s, I think Tom and Steve were around then, they might remember. It was in the 26,000 area. But that's not the only reason it's come down. The big reason is that even though more houses have been built, more apartments, all of the fixtures are extremely energy efficient. People remodel, they put energy efficient items in. So, there's so much efficiency going on, it's reduced what is used, and not just Wakefield, it's the entire state, it's all across the country.
Right. Okay, yeah, so similar population, but, okay, that's good. Thank you.
I just have one other question, too, that relates, I guess, to the rates. Water meters, I know that's been a hot topic, a lot of folks have a personal name about it. There's been a lot of inconsistency, some people have reported in terms of their meters. Could you, Mr. Stinson, just talk a little bit about your understanding of the issue, and could you explain your confidence and where we are with the reliability?
One, and one thing I say every time it comes up, and first of all, and I hope you all have the current memo from 2015, if you don't, let me know and make sure you get it. The, it's been reviewed a dozen times, and you have all the reasons in there, and I'll go through them quickly. One thing I always say is, if you vote to, and this memo says from the Advisory Board that if you decide you want to change, here's the procedures.
I think he's referring to, sure, the irregularities on different meters.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
But I bet that question's coming, then.
Yeah, okay. Okay. The, two things, I guess. One is that on, on water meters, the June, July, August, September timeframe is always higher than any other time of year. It's hotter, people take more showers, they, you know, drink more, they use more water, just the way it is. The consumption, we try to read on 90-day basis. What happens is, a lot of times, because of whether it be emergencies with water main breaks, snow storms, because everyone in the department plows, that schedule will get thrown off, and so you may end up with a bill that, instead of 90 days, is 110 days. And then, you'd get a bill that's on the lower side. At the end of the day, when you take the $2 amounts and add them together, it's the same amount as you would have paid if you would build at 90-days intervals. It does not change, okay? Meter-wise, we have only had one meter test high in the last 16 years. Meters test slow. We do a couple different testings. We have an in-house testing bench, which is not that old. It was probably 10 years at the most. It's calibrated all the time, and when people request, if they want to, we will send that meter out. However, if it tests on the low side, they are responsible for paying that cost. If it tests on the high side, we cover that cost, okay? If they don't want to go by our testing. But we've only had one meter in 16 years that has tested high.
So, as of tonight, you have complete confidence in the meters that exist?
Absolutely, yeah. You know, and we're, the, we're working to try to get, by installing the new meter reading devices, we are, we'll be able to really nail down that 90-day reading timeframe. We're finishing up on installing those meters, so we hope by the end of the year to have those in. And even this year reading, we're going to be, there'll be some days that are over, but we're going to be pretty close to 90 days in most cases. There will be some 98, 96, but for the most part, there'll be 90 days. Thank you.
Mr. Stinson, just a couple of questions on my own right now. We do, as a town, a lot of work on inflow and infiltration. Is that making a big impact on keeping the rates down on the sewer side?
Well, I think you have to look at it this way. If we didn't do it, the rates would go much higher. When everybody does it, and I mean all of the MWRA communities, it doesn't have as great of an impact, okay, on reducing costs. The person who gets penalized is the person who does not do it, because theirs isn't going down, ours would go down, and we'd make out on that deal. So, it does help, but everyone else in the system, well, the majority of people in the system are doing that.
Okay, very good. Just a question. The pumping stations that we're doing over right now, the Farm Street one's not the one that you're being...
Farm Street was done in 2001, and then we did another six since, after that, and we, the two that we're doing this coming year, there's a small one that we're doing, and then the Bay State Road Station, which is a pretty good-sized station.
And I'm going to be the one that's going to bring it up, just out of curiosity, because I've had a lot of people ask me. In real short, brief statement, I've read the documents that are in the packet right now, the second meter for households. If you go by what they're saying here, that if we put a second meter on, it's going to cost your neighbor more money because you have a second meter just for water on there. So, could you just explain this as simple, simply as possible for the people that may be watching?
A couple of things that are important. One, if everyone in town put in a second meter for irrigation system, and we would never recommend it for pools or outside spigots, no one does that. They're all for irrigation system. That, the few, and people, actually, towns are getting rid of them, their policies that have had it, so they, it's kind of gone the other way. So, if you allowed this, and everybody did it in the system, you probably wouldn't have any change in what was happening. Obviously, when you make a change like that, not everyone's going to do it, because there is still cost involved in doing that. Couple of things is that, one, first of all, I'll have meter number one, so if you ever vote it, let me know, because I'll be putting the first one in, so I'll be looking forward to that, and my wife will, too, also. But one of the big things is that we, the sewer rate would change. The sewer rate would go up. You'd say, why would it go up? Well, you have to turn around and still fund that budget. Well, you have to turn around and still fund that budget, okay? So if you take flow away from there, it's going to go up. Using water consumption for sewer calculation is just a means of calculation. If you look at the water side, we do an average of 2 point, 2 million gallons a day. On the sewer side, we do about 4.6 million gallons a day. You would think that they would be pretty close. So where is the rest of that coming from? It comes from people with cracked pipes, sewer pipes, their service pipe in the yard, that if you have an irrigation system, more water goes into the ground, it goes into that pipe. If you have a sump pump in your basement, you're putting that into the sewer system. And that's a huge issue, one that caused us a lot of headaches this year. And they're dumping that into the sewer system, that's increasing the assessment. If you go and have a case of tonic that goes flat, and you dump that down the sewer system, that's not getting measured either. So, and there are no homeowner sewer meters, I mean, it's, you know, so it's used as a basis for calculating a fee, okay? And that's the whole thought process behind it. There are other ways to calculate that fee, okay? None of them are going to be, make anybody happy, or going to be the most accurate. This is probably the best way to do it. Couple other important things is that the, if you were to change on that section in the back that gives you an outline, a recommendation, if you decided to authorize them, we would need to do a cost, a service analysis and a rate study. That's probably a $50,000 to $70,000 cost. Because at the end of the day, if you're wrong, and with a small reserve, you'll end up in the red, okay? And you can't afford to have that happen. You would have to fund a town meeting, $200,000 for meters. Even though people pay, will pay for the meter, we cannot spend that money. It goes into the enterprise fund, and then could be reallocated, but you have to do the upfront cost portion of it. And it could be more than 200,000, but that's a number that we would recommend, and we don't have 200,000 in a reserve to do that. And the, we list a bunch of other things that I think are important if you did that. Sump pumps be eliminated, people would have to sign that they eliminate those. That's a huge cost for the town sump pumps. And a huge cost to everyone. If you don't have one, you're getting hurt by someone else who does have one that runs all the time. When they, instead of putting it in the sewer system, they could put it out in the lawn, put it in the drainage system. So putting it in the sewer system is a direct cost to everybody. The, when you look at the, the second, oh, where is it right here? DEP regulations were supposed to be down at 65 gallons per day per person, and they just look at the flow. Right now, without a second meter policy, we're at about 80 gallons per day per person. So at some point in the future, my guess is they will implement restrictions based on that, okay? So you could, you could implement a second meter policy, and then they may tell you, no, you're not going to do it. So you have increased capital and operating costs, you have the DEP requirements, sewer, the sewer calculation from the MWRA, the assessment is based on flow, it's based on population, it's based on maximum flow for a month, total suspended solids, and a bunch of other stuff. So it's very complicated. They don't just use flow either to calculate that. If you go to SESD, their sewer district, they use flow only. So it, it kind of varies depending on where you go. And so would having a second meter show a user's true cost on the sewer side? Absolutely not.
Very good. Thank you. Any other further questions from the board at this time?
This isn't the first time you've just used, but I think what, and I have an irrigation system, so I would be voting against my own interest. But I think, I'm not comfortable shifting the burden to homeowners who don't have a second meter, so, because I might be lucky enough to have one, you would be shifting some financial burden, because as you said, not everyone can have a second meter. So that has always struck with, stuck with me is, is why I would not vote to implement the second meter. And towns around us are, are starting to do moratoriums. Reading has one, I believe, now, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Carol did a great job on this.
She did. Carol, as you know, and I should have, I think, I don't know, maybe not everyone does, Carol Anthony Nelly is my DPW business and operations manager. And she is also the, and there's two boards, so please, don't confuse her with the MWRA Board of Directors. She's on the advisory board, which fights for the town.
I'm on the watchdog.
The watchdog room, okay. She's not on the Board of Directors, so. Yeah. So, the last thing I do want to mention is, and I forgot to mention this tonight, the MWRA Board of Directors will vote the end of the month on the assessment. They could vote to lower that assessment or increase the assessment. Most times, it goes lower. Back a couple of years ago, it did go higher, and one year, they voted in mid-year to do an added assessment. So, that's, and you have to, one thing you have to remember, the water system's old, they're starting to work on that now. And the sewer system in Dare Island, which is, there's all kinds of debt there that they're trying to pay off a lot. But remember that the Dare Island treatment plant's probably now 25 or 30 years old, and they're starting to change things out on that, so.
Very good.
Could I just talk about for one second on this issue of the bills? If people are, because I know so many people have raised it with me, if, if it's something that's been raised by a lot of folks, are there any other kind of external elements that could be at play, or any guidance you could offer them, or any resources they can go to, to determine why it is that these bills, you know, from their perspective, are much higher? I mean, would they have any issues on their end, pipe issues, or, I mean, because it just, there's just been too many people upset, and, and I know you said everything's been calibrated and tested, so if it's not the meters, could it be anything else?
Right. It, it could be. A lot of it's perception. I think that with the people who come in, a good portion of it's perception, they think it's higher when it's not. But if your toilet's leaking, and we have a ruler that shows it, that, I mean, there's nothing that small here to show the pinhole size and how much you would lose, it's huge. So we provide dye tablets for people to test their toilets. If you have a leak in your system, and one person, one time, had it, and it was going directly into their sump hole, so they didn't even know they had it. If you have a leak like that, it could be that, there's a lot of, if you have a leak in your irrigation system, it could be that. Most people don't know whether they have one or not. I mean, they should have it pressure-tested each year to make sure they don't have a leak there, because it adds up when it leaks out, you know? We've had people that, they go away, and the neighbor used their outside spigot, was doing construction, and they said it was okay, and they didn't realize how much it was going to cost. There's a, there's a lot of things that play into that, but, you know, so. And bottom line is, I think people use more water than what they really believe they do. I always sit back when I look at my bill, especially after the irrigation season, and go, how do we do that? You know? So.
Any further questions? Anyone in the audience would like to have anything to say? No?
No.
Very good. I like that one. That's even better. So we have four motions that need to be made right now in order to move forward. The first one would be a motion to set the water rate at $6.95 per hundred cubic feet as requested. So, we have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Motion made a second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Second motion is for the sewer rate. We have $10.90 per 100 cubic feet recommended.
Second.
Move second at all, favor?
Aye.
Sewer flat rate, flat rate of $327 per quarter or $294.30 after the discount is taken.
So moved.
Moving second at all, favor?
Aye.
And the last one, the septic disposal rate. Facility opening and maintenance charge of $110 per delivery, disposal cost per 100 cubic feet is charged at the current sewer rate. Off-hour disposal rates, additional minimum three hours at current W9 scale times 1.5.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay right there, please.
Okay.
Talk about Market Street. Yes. We want to move on to, hold on one second, please, while I get my paper. Item E, we want to jump to item E, Market Street Agreement.
Yeah, I guess I'll jump in if you want. As the board knows, I spoke to the board about this, warned them this was coming, I think back in April. Market Street, which for those people at home is the shopping center, lifestyle center, bar hopping center, I guess, in Linfield, and they do not have their own sewage there. Much of Linfield is on septic system, they could not run that facility without putting the sewage somewhere. So back a long time ago, in 2008, when that place was being created, they did enter into a sewer agreement at the time of Wakefield. At that time, we received a lot of money for the entire place, I think 1.5 million, probably, for reducing inflow infiltration and what have you, plus, of course, they pay us for the sewer to go through. They also made a lot of repairs to the colonial site, which had a lot of problems at the time, in addition. This was also based on a flow coming through Wakefield of 76,350 gallons per day. This was based on, and we didn't know what the flow was going to be. This was based on the fact that, at the beginning time, that mix-up there was going to be mainly retail, or more retail than it is now. I think Market Street discovered that retail was not doing well, because everyone wore their stuff online, gets to deliver it to your door, so they opened more restaurants. Well, certainly, restaurants and those places have a lot more flow than, think about of a store, there's nothing really going on there. So they're probably up to around 97,000 a day. So we, you know, have been studying this, looked at it, and when we heard that they were contemplating a, even a newer facility going up there, I guess a medical facility, we reached out to them, came to this board and let them know. So we're looking for, and Mr. Stinson will jump in if I'm wrong, they do owe us some money, because this additional 21,000 gallons is coming through now, a day, and there's no problem in our system.
And we're getting paid.
And we're getting paid.
For that.
For that. But there certainly is a backlog that maybe we weren't.
What we haven't, what we haven't been paid for is the inflow infiltration fee.
As in the beginning.
If we had done it in the beginning, we would have been paid for that.
So that's $426,000, give and take, that we're expecting payment of there. I also mentioned to the board at the time that, asked if there was anything extra we'd like to get, and I certainly asked them for a little bit extra, I asked them to give us, I'll call it linkage, of $100,000 to be used solely for purposes, which will, this board will determine in the future. I have a few ideas about that, probably about economic development and what have you in our downtown area. Certainly, the Alami Cultural Exchange comes to mind, but the board, we can talk about that, that's not really for this agreement here today. So that's, I think, where we are, Rick, with them. I also, interestingly enough, I've spoken with a few board members, and interestingly enough, last week, there was a article in the paper regarding Market Street Group, which is not who we're dealing with here, who we're working with, it's not the, it's not the owner of Market Street, it is a concern group of Linfield citizens who, I guess, have never liked some of the deals that we've cut with Market Street. Particularly, that we have requested, through the zoning process, because they did need us in order to do some signage, we have requested that they, when they market to their, and they advertise their development, that they do advertise only exit 43, which makes perfect sense to me, because that is right across from the open of Market Street. If you've ever driven by, you come right off the highway, if you're going southbound, you cross right over Walnut Street, and you're there, you don't go by House, you don't go by Neighborhood at all. If you're coming northbound on 128, you get off at the highway, you go around, and you go right under 128, and lo and behold, you're at the Market Street entrance. So we're talking to some of the board members, and this was after this went out, I think there was a discussion that maybe we want to have them reaffirm those agreements that they did make with the zoning board, they certainly stand on their own, but that they would continue any and all marketing materials, including when they do advertise on the billboard out on 128, which I do see it, and they do put 43 there, and when they go through any Google Maps and things like that, MapQuest or what have you, that they also mention 43, not 42. And that their tenants also will do that within their leases. And that has certainly been what they have been doing that before. I don't anticipate any reason why they wouldn't continue to do that. So I think in talking to a couple of board members, Mr. Chairman, that might be another condition you may want to add to this. And that's it. I think, I don't know if Mr. Stinson has anything to add.
No, I mean, I think it, and we found it when we were looking at water consumption, because that's what we build their sewer off of also. And, you know, so we've been getting paid for that amount with the rate, but this will give us the inflow infiltration amount that we would have got if it was initially known that we were going to use that much on the.
So it's really very consistent with the person.
Correct.
Members of the board.
Right now, we're at 28% over the agreement for sewage. And what happens if it just keeps going up and up? Is there continually marketing and building new facilities, they are looking at a movie theater, you know, I'm sure just restaurants are coming in? What happens if that 97 goes to 150 over?
If they, this factors in the, what do you call it, is it Hallmark Health, or who is it up there, Tufts or?
Leahy, I believe.
Leahy? This fact, this includes the Leahy building in that calculation. If they were to build a movie theater, that would have to be approved by the Linfield, Steve, you might know, is it zoning board or whoever?
The zoning does not allow that right now, is my understanding in Linfield. They'd have to go through that hoop. If they do exceed the maximum, they'd be back.
Then we'd actually go in, because that's outside the full development they're looking at. So we'd be back looking for additional money.
And we're not taxing our lines at all? Our sewer lines?
No. Thank you.
Any other member? So my motion would be to reaffirm this component.
Yep, that I mentioned.
Okay, so at this point, then, I would like to make an amendment to the agreement by adding a motion that we would like the sewer agreement have an additional clause added to it on page three, item one, a line, new line, III, that reaffirms the decision of the zoning board of appeal into this agreement as well.
And I can put that together for the board.
So that's my motion to, to alter the agreement.
Second.
Moving seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just think it's important to, to point out that this is just a reiteration of what's already in place, it's already been. already in place, it's already been established, and so this is nothing new, it's, it's just, we're just reaffirming, reiterating it in this other document, so I think that's important, an important distinction to be made.
Very good point. Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. You might want to jump to, um, the appointment.
Okay, so let me, um, okay, members of the board, please, um, another indulgence, please. Um, I'd like to move to item seven, uh, the joint meeting of the Wakefield Housing Authority and our board, so if, um, get a few members up to the mic.
Oops. I dropped the skirt.
Mrs. Good, welcome.
Not my skirt.
I'm Maureen Hickey, I'm the chairman of the board.
Al Comfor, member of the board.
Jane Good, whatever, treasurer, I think. We just had our...
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, we're here to discuss the appointment of a member to fill the unexpired, uh, unexpired term, and that person you have is, um, Chuck Gere?
Josh Gere, yeah.
Would you have anything to say to the matter?
Nope, we support the, um, appointment to the board, we need another member of the board, with three of us, it's hard to get a quorum, so.
We lost two members to, to death, we, two of them was expired, so we're down low.
I think so, the board knows in, uh, the public knows, in cases like this, where there is, someone leaves during their term, um, uh, it is, um, under state law that the joint meeting between the board of selectmen and the affected board jointly appoints someone to fill that term, okay? In this case, it's a little bit, uh, different, because in housing authorities or housing boards, things are starting to change statewide, so we really don't know what's gonna happen in the future, this may be an appointment for the completion of this unexpired term, which I believe is till 2021, if I'm not mistaken, or the state may be changing things later, but I think our, uh, motion would be to fill this unexpired term until we hear otherwise from the state.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, is this for a non-tenant member?
Yes, yeah, it does not need to be tenant.
Any discussion from the board? I'll entertain a motion then to accept the nomination of Chuck Gere, uh, to fill the, uh, vacancy on the, uh, Wakefield Housing Authority. We have a mo- motion?
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion further? Hearing none? Everyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, unanimous vote.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Good job done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's, uh, resume the meeting back at item number, uh, three B, the library request to accept and expend the gift to the library, and that is, I brought it here, $720. Thank you, $728. Motion? So moved, do I have a second? All, all in favor of the motion to accept? Thank you very much. Uh, the next item is the Greenwood School sign.
If I can jump on that, on that one, Mr. Chairman. The Greenwood School, I believe it's the PTO, but specifically the class of 2017, has, um, is donating a freestanding sign to the Greenwood School that will be placed out in front of the school at a position that they will work out with the DBW director, so it doesn't hit a line, or it's not in a bad place for, um, uh, for cars and what have you, for access. The sign did go out to the board, there's a couple of changes that will be made on the sign, that will be made, and you can make that, your vote contingent upon that. Number one is that the, um, quotations around the gifted by class of 2017 will be removed, as that is not a quotationable item, um, and that the font for that, um, section would be smaller. I think most of your gifts in town, signs, you probably have a one-tenth, if you look around and looked at it, um, so those will be a little bit smaller. I discussed that with the superintendent today, she was going to let them know, school committee has already approved this in concept, so with those changes, um, and I think maybe that third font being matched, uh, that not being a third font, but that font matching the second font on that, that'll be taken care of. So, I think I covered everything, was there anything else that needed to be looked at? With thanks to the Greenwood PTO, which I believe is doing this.
Any further, uh, any comments from the board?
I have a question. Just curiosity, why green? Just be, only because we're red and...
I don't, because I think that their color is green there, the Greenwood Gators, they talk about, the element is a little different.
Okay, got it, just wondering.
There are no commas in here, though.
No, the comma, lack of common use is appropriate. I've approved that.
Were the Gators an Indian tribe?
No, they, don't stop.
Okay, so, um, if no one has any further comments, I will entertain a motion to make, uh, to have the approval of the sign contingent on the items that Mr. Mayor presented. So moved, so moved, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's what we want to see the next item.
Why?
We have a, um, item on here, Wakefield Public School Request Bike Surplus. So in your package, you have a picture of the multiple bikes that are in surplus from the school. Steve, do you have any?
Uh, yeah, I think that, uh, years ago, a, uh, these were actually donated to the town, um, either for a physical education program at the Dahlia School, they no longer have that program, so what they would like to do, the school department, it is surplus property, they need the board of selectmen approval to do this, they would like to, uh, work with some local charitable organization to find Wakefield children who could use this in their personal use. I think it's a real nice thing, and the bikes look actually pretty good, in the pictures, so, um, we would need, uh, selectmen would need to, um, to clear this surplus and allow them to do that.
Any discussion? No? Uh, did any motion?
I move that we declare the bikes as surplus.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Let's move on to item F. Town treasurer requests transfer $1,102,725 from the town's capital projects account to the town's general fund, so that the following bonds can be paid by July 1st, 2017. Galvin, no, GMA?
Galvin Middle School.
Galvin Middle School Principal, $610,000, interest, $446,725. Athletic Fields Principal, $35,000, interest, $11,000. Do I have a motion?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We're going to open up the next item for, uh, discussion now, and that is the potential, uh, discussion regarding a potential name change of our board. Steve, could you give us a little background?
Sure, sure. Many communities, at least 30 communities in Massachusetts, have, um, actually formally changed the name of their Board of Selectmen to, you know, Wakefield Select Board, or Wakefield or Brewster Select Board, and Brewster, Mass. that just did it. This is a discussion that is also occurring in many of our, um, very much closer communities. I know that Winchester is undergoing discussion, Melrose Board of Alderman is also going through discussion on this. I think that, uh, the reason for that is that it is the only board or committee in any town, Board of Alderman or Board of Selectmen, that is specific by gender. We have school committees, we have commissions, we have Board of Appeals, we have Health, the Board of Health, that don't, um, look at that. In talking to Mr. Mullen about this, um, if this board wanted to pursue this, and I think it's something that, there may be some discussion on, uh, it would also, uh, require a charter change, we do have a charter committee right now, because our charter refers to a Board of Selectmen, so there'd have to be some name changes in that as well. Like I said, there's 30 towns that I look at it, Concord, um, is one of the ones that's closest to us, most of these are in Western Mass, but, uh, like the Terna thesis, the Western is, Western is bringing it back east, uh, for those of you who have that, um, historical background. So that's it, I, I am discussing with the chair, uh, it was something to be brought forward to have the board look at and discuss, and maybe just talk about it, and then move it to the, um, Charter Commission, which has to come back to this board anyway with their recommendations, so, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir, appreciate the, uh, background. So I'm going to, um, open up the discussion, as far as, uh, to determine the direction on what's the best course of action in this matter. So, um, members of the board, I mean, how do you want to proceed? Anybody who would like to make a comment at this time? Tony?
How would we put this back into the general electorate to have the town vote on? Is that a possibility, or maybe?
Well, the charter's town meeting. Charter's gonna be town.
How about a general election?
See, yeah, the, in order to, one of the ways to, um, change the charter is to have town meeting, uh, vote by a two-thirds vote, uh, to recommend to the, the public as a whole, and then the question is put on the ballot.
Okay.
If I may just add, one, one concern that, uh, you might want to address or ask the Charter Review Committee to address is, if you do change the name of the board to Select Board, what do you call an individual member?
No, really?
No, I agree.
You could say Select Board Member, or you could say Select Person.
I mean, I weigh in as not a man, um, in the Board of Selectmen, this was not, this was not raised by either of the two women on the board, I just want to make that very clear, because I don't think we, there was bigger fish to fry for women in, um, public office, but it is kind of, I mean, I've called myself Selectman Santos for the last four years, it's, you know, occasionally it sounds a little strange, because I'm not one, um, so I think discuss, having, discussing what a name change could be, makes sense, it's the only, what struck me, it's the only board that has a gender designation. I don't know that I would put it up to the town to vote on our name change, I think we can discuss it and then suggest something to the Charter Commission, who can then discuss something. Um, I mean, we can discuss what we like, this is not, we're the elected members.
We can, but if we go to the Charter Commission, doesn't that automatically go to the town meeting?
Yeah, but it's not, right, so if someone wanted to speak out against it at town meeting, they certainly could, it's not like it would be an individual, you know, the whole charter is to...
I got you, yep.
Is discussed. Um, so I'm certainly up to having a discussion about it, I'm not stomping my feminist flag to do it, but it is a little strange that it's the only board that has a gender designation.
Anybody else have any comments to make at this time? Anybody have a recommendation to make at this time?
I was just interested in knowing, um, just process in terms of, you know, going forward with the, with the discussion, so here we go, to Charter Review Committee, then, how, how would that work, Mr. Mullen, at what part, would there be public participation, for example, not just for whether to change the name, but also if there was to be a name change, what the name change is? You know, where's, where's that input come from?
Well, there are a couple of ways of amending a charter. The one I mentioned earlier was what we've used in the past, and that is, uh, town meeting votes by a two-thirds vote to recommend, and then that recommendation is put on the ballot, so, that will get before the public for a vote. And then, the other way is town meeting can vote by majority vote to ask the legislature to amend the charter. We haven't done that here. Um, and then typically, the legislature makes, uh, if it, if it grants the request, does so on the contingency that the town put it on the ballot and vote in favor of it.
So it sounds like, in terms of any potential name change, the process would involve Charter Review, then coming before town meeting, town meeting with a two-thirds vote agreeing to then have it on the ballot, at which case, then the voters vote on it, is that what the process is?
Two-thirds, or a majority, if it, if in the meantime, it goes to Beegan Hill.
But presumably, presumably it wouldn't go to legislature, we'd still, we'd still put it on our ballot, basically.
We, we probably wanted to go directly to the, the ballot here, right, that's what we've done in the past.
I just think it's, you know, it's a discussion that I think it, um, there should be town input on, certainly, and I'd be, I'd be very interested to hear what constituents have to say on it. I, I agree with Ann's point, you know, I do think that it's something that we, that can be discussed within the town, I think our charter is broad, but I think we have a lot of, you know, other pressing issues as well, certainly, um, but, but I, I'm very open to hear what other people have to say on it, so I think that that, I would suggest we determine that pushing it forward to Charter Review Committee probably would make the most sense, and then let them determine how they want to have public participation and the like, and, and get the input that they think they would need to form their own recommendation.
I think, is it the, I'm a liaison to the Charter Commission, so we could certainly, um, involve public participation, we could ask, um, for the public to send us recommendations to come to a meeting, I mean, that's, those are things that we absolutely could do, so, or the Charter Commission could do, I'm sure.
Tony?
But at the end of the day, I would like to see it on the general election ballot.
Well, it sounds like that's, it's more likely to have two scenarios, that the other is gonna be the legislature's.
Just the name change?
Sure.
But does that get carved out from the charter itself?
Well, if, it seems pretty likely to me, though, if I haven't been dealing with the Charter Review Committee, uh, that they are going to recommend one or more changes other than this, so I, I would envision that the Charter Committee would put forth a slate of suggested changes to town meeting, which could be voted on individually, and, and debated individually at town meeting, uh, and those that survived a two-thirds vote would then go on to the ballot.
Perfect.
I, I just want to say, I'm a little curious about it going to the general ballot, it is the only gender-specific, uh, board or commission that we have in town, you're a planning board member, I was a Charter Review Committee member, um, this was not brought up by Ann and I, it is something I hear from people in town all the time, they, they mumble over what to call me, um, we're really lucky in Wakefield, you have, uh, we have two women on this board, uh, uh, towns like Reading have zero, towns like Linfield have zero, so there's two of us, and, um, I'm just curious why, you know, it needs to be a vote, there's nothing else that we have gender specific, and there's two women on this board now.
Three years ago, I believe you had, oh, sorry, Paul.
Hold on, the discussion's already booked, go ahead.
And then, three years ago, two years ago, you had three women on the board, if I'm correct, so, it is a great thing. No one can, you know, say we're not inclusive, or, you know, so we have three women on the board.
I guess I'm just trying to understand just the process, you know, just sort of, I think to your point, Mary, and, you know, you're asking about, you know, why vote and not vote, I'm just trying to understand what the process is, it sounds like, Tom, there's one of two ways, it's either it's voted on by the town, or it goes before the legislature, if, if I'm hearing correctly. It's not, it's not something we would vote on tonight and make happen, as an example.
In answer to the question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, why go to the, to the ballot, uh, if you're going to change the charter, this is how you do it, so, now, maybe you're raising the question, can we just call ourselves a select board without changing the charter? And sure, and in the same way that a corporation can adopt a, uh, a trade name that deviates from its official name, there's no legal problem with that. I, I think, though, that if the board wants to make an official change, uh, something that will show up, for example, when you sign a bond, uh, then you do need to change the charter.
But I think we can, we can be involved in the discussion, the Charter Commission will ask us what we think, I know that they will, so there's nothing wrong with us having some names, or having, you know, we are the Board of Selectmen at this point, so we have a right to say what we might prefer with public input, but I know they're going to put it back on us to say, what do you think? And I think we have every right to say what we think, not just rely on public input, but of course, that can be a part of it, but we can also discuss, um, different names.
And I agree with you on that point, because I, I was always under the impression that even if we referred to the Charter Review, and they did their discussion on it, and they came, ultimately, before it went on to, uh, town meeting, it has to come before us anyway, for us to review what their recommendations are, that would be done here before, is that correct, Tom? When the Charter Review is done, will they usually present to the board?
They will be coming back, uh, but really, anybody, of course, can put an article on town, the town meeting warrant, if you get 10 signatures, you're there.
Correct, okay, so, I, again, I think that this is a great way of opening up any further discussion, at least getting some feedback from, uh, constituents, and even from this board, to, uh, what their opinions are, and, and before we make a decision that's going to have to change a lot of documentation that was just presented. that was just presented and at least make sure that we're doing the right thing for the right reasons. Okay? And then move forward that way. So I'm still open as to what would be the recommendation from the Board at this point? Is there a motion to refer to the Charter Review for further discussion? Or do we want another motion? Is there another motion on the floor right now?
I actually do. I want to study how we can progress kind of on two tracks, because the Charter Review, as being a member, previous member of that committee, they're not planning to go to town meeting until October of 2018. So it's a year and a half before it would even be up for discussion. And so as much as we could have a conversation and make changes, not in the formal Charter, but as how we present stuff and documents, I actually want to continue to have that conversation because October 2018 is a long time away.
Okay. And so you just want to keep the discussion open?
I want, if there's ways that Tom and Steve can get back to us about things that we can do outside of the Charter, I'd like to hear about that.
Paul, you could entertain suggestions for, it doesn't have to be Board of Selectmen. Maybe there's other things we can call ourselves. But I can't imagine, I don't know how you argue against changing the name Board of Selectmen. I would love to hear that argument, someone to say that we need to keep it Board of Selectmen. So that's why people on the Board can certainly give you suggestions. It doesn't have to be Select Board. It could be, I feel town committee, whatever.
What I'm hearing, though, from most of the members said, though, that they want, as in Mary herself, is that we want further discussion on how to move forward, but we don't want to wait for that discussion to happen.
Right.
So we want to maintain it. So, right, so let's keep talking. Right. So do we keep talking today or do we keep talking to another meeting? I mean, how do we want to handle that? That's why I'm trying to find out right now.
You're the Chair.
I'm the Chair.
We're not going to come to a resolution tonight to go this way or that way. It's something that we have to look into. It's, you know, the name was thrown out there a couple of weeks ago, kind of like trying to sneak it by, which I really didn't appreciate.
I don't think it was sneaking it by from their perspective. You can ask Mr. Mayo on that. I don't think you were trying to sneak it by.
How if we do this? And I'm big on this right now for this year, upcoming year, anyway. I had previously suggested, Steve, that we conduct four forums this year before April. We're having one forum coming up next Wednesday.
The 21st.
21st, okay. And then we could have another forum come up after that period. Why don't we have a forum and bring the public into it early to see what their opinion is on the matter as well, too?
That's fine, but just to be clear, the opinion can't be to keep the name. We put it out there that we don't change it because it's gender-based. If someone suggests the name should change, I'm not entertaining that opinion. I appreciate it, but I'm, it's, I don't know how you argue that it needs, that man needs to be in Selectmen. And again, this was not our, this was not our motion at all, but I think if we came to a consensus perhaps that the name should change, we just don't know what the name should be. I don't know.
I'm open to any and all discussion, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to close the door on either way because I personally want more discussion. So what's the flavor of the Board right now? I would like to have further discussion, so it was just said it's up to the Chair. So what the Chair is going to make a recommendation then is that we continue with the discussion on this matter to seek a resolution to a potential change. If that's not the case, then we'll move on to another life of its own. But I want to, I would like to move this to more discussion between ourselves and then present it to a forum to see what input is from the public. We serve the town, so let's hear what they have to say as well, too.
Does the Board also want this referred to the Charter Commission to look at as well? I heard that, too.
Do we want it to be sent to the Charter Review?
The Charter Review is going to be involved, and so listening to their input, but I appreciate Mary's, she reminded me that it's a year and a half away. So if we can come to some, even if it's an informal resolution before that, how we refer to ourselves and then it's formalized in the Charter, that can certainly happen.
I don't have an objection to that. So, General, what do we have here? Any further input as to? Tony?
I think we just keep all options open. I'm not against changing the name, but I think you just have to say, you know, if the town votes to keep us Selectmen, then we stay Selectmen.
It's been Selectmen since 1625. Not that time is, is one of us speak to. It doesn't mean the time in makes it right, but it is a big change, I think. And I actually personally don't think it's a gender bias. I know you mentioned earlier that you wouldn't be able to think about anyone thinking that way, but Selectmen, you know, talking about other terms in town, you know, you have firemen, you have policemen. It's a little offshoot there, but Selectmen has been around a long time. I just looked it up just out of curiosity, if you don't mind, and I'll just read it. It's one of the Board of Town Officers chosen to manage certain public affairs. So it's been around a long time. Started in England, came to the US, but it's a long time coming. I really don't, I don't personally think it's gender biased. I think it's actually just a term. It happens to be MAN, so does woman, MAN. I mean, it's just, MAN's on there. So I don't think, I really don't think it's gender biased.
Peter, you suggested we change it to Board of Women, Board of Selectwoman? I just want to say that's great that it's tied in tradition. Women didn't even have the right to vote in 1625. So we weren't even allowed to vote. We weren't allowed to serve. I understand tradition. And I think most people are called actually police officer and like, they're not called policemen anymore. So I think Amy Rando and others would say they're police officers, not policemen.
But I really think that, to everyone's point, I understand the concern, and I always thought when I first got here, that Dan and little Betsy just before, Phyllis, obviously it's, it ties into, you know, Select Woman. You kind of think of yourselves as Select, as Select Woman or Select Women, right, in general? So I'm open to the Charter Review, I think, going over this. I don't think we should spend a ton of time because there are way more important things at town than everyone's mentioned. But given your just due, I'm not taking away from that either, but I think there's a lot more involved than just changing it.
I think just my concern with all this is just process, and I don't think that, I think we should be humble enough to realize that we're just warming these seats until the next people come and sit down in them. And so when we're talking about the governing body of this town, I don't think the current Board members should be making that determination. I think that it's a question for the town, what do you want to call the governing body that governs your town? And if the majority is to change the name, then let's change the name. If the majority is to keep it the same, then maybe that's what happens. I don't know. I just don't feel comfortable as one of seven making this kind of determination. I mean, there's, the Board of Selectmen has referenced in so many different, you know, documents, obviously, and authority, you know, that's bestowed upon us. I just think it's better that we take ourselves out of it and let the town decide what they want to call, you know, what they want to call this Board. We're just keeping the seats warm until the next people come in, and I think that's something that we should just keep in mind with all this. And it's not a commentary for or against, I think it's just, again, my only concern is one of process. And I think if we have the ability to have processes that engage people and if people feel strongly about the name change, I want to hear that. I think it's important. If people have, you know, ideas in terms of what the governing body should be called if we already change the name, let's have all those ideas. I think that that's an important discussion to be had. I just don't feel like we're in a position to kind of rename ourselves. I think that the town should rename if they choose to do so and make that decision for their governing body. And that's my only, my only hang up on all of this.
So at this point, we've already asked Tom and Steve to review this and then get back to us and give us, let's give them the opportunity to get the information for us and move forward in the direction that we already gave them right now. We mentioned the Charter. I mentioned the forum. We mentioned continuing our own discussion among ourselves. So let's move down that path and see where this brings us. Again, I don't think there was going to be a decision made tonight. So I mean, that would be my recommendation to the Board right now is to allow Tom and Steve to do as they said that they would do and make some, get some information for us, and we'll move on from there. So unless anyone else has an objection to that, that would be my recommendation to the Board at this time. Hearing no objection. And let's move on, please, to the next item. Item number four on the agenda is the formation of two committees. You should have in your packet you receive, where I recently asked Steve to put together the signed Bylaw Review and the Plastic Bag Bylaw Review Committee. On this one, I see that in my packet, though. As far as placement of number. I'm sorry. I don't have that with my packet.
Let me see. I don't want to miss. The, I got my idea, Mr. Chairman. So the Signed Bylaw Review Committee, I think many of you, many of us have heard that our signed bylaw does leave much to be desired for particularly some of our business owners. I'm sure you've all heard that. Something that's been a long time coming. Chairman asked me to put together a committee that would include myself, the Building Inspector, the Town Planner, two members of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Board of Appeals, one member of the Chamber of Commerce, one member of the Main Streets Program, and one member of the Business Community.
So we need a motion to inform the Board?
I think you want to inform.
Okay. So I need a motion then from the Board to formally form the committee so that we can then make appointments to it. We have a motion to form. Okay. So we have a motion made in second in favor of forming the Signed Bylaw Review Committee? Aye? Thank you. So the next one right now would be the Plastic Bag Bylaw Review Committee. This was a bylaw that was, a committee that was given to us through town meeting that we formed this and come to a resolution.
And this again would be myself, the Town Planner, the Building Inspector, two members of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Chamber of Commerce, one member of the Business Community, and two citizens at large, one being offered to Caitlin Brackett, who actually authored this.
Motion from the Board? Sub moved. Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
I think the Chairman will get back on the, on the side. And these will be openly posted meeting, the Selectmen Appointed Committee, so they'll have open meeting.
So I'll be discussing, contacting several of you as far as appointments and such. Let's go on to item number five, approval of licenses. Pony Shack Cider, Inc. It's a liquor license for the farmer's market. Mr. Mayo?
As the Board knows, that the farmer's market does have a few, I guess, attendees that do sell liquor. There's actually a special section of statute for farm wineries at agricultural events like farmer's markets. These have to be, again, made in Massachusetts, made locally, what have you. There's already one, it's that Arrow, Arrow NAP that this Board has approved. This, I guess, sells more like hard cider and things like that, Pony Shack Cider, Inc. And these are the, Tom Mullen has already reviewed the forms, put them together, and they've got everything into us, Sherry, I believe? Yes.
Discussion from the Board. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then to grant the liquor license for the farmer's market for Pony Shack Cider, Inc. Sub moved. Moved in second. They're all in favor, say aye? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. A common Victrol's license for the bread shop. Mr. Mayo?
Yes, the bread shop is going to have inside dining, where I guess where you can enjoy one of their crescent rolls or quiche that they made or a piece of bread, and they also sell coffee. I would just ask that this also be subject to approval by the Board of Health. I don't anticipate an issue, but we often say that in common Victrol's licenses. They have small area, they'll probably encounter some seedings, and that is the nexus. Once they have seats, we have to give them a Victrol's license or they need one to serve there.
Comments from the Board? I'll entertain a motion then to grant the common Victrol's license to the bread shop with the caveat that they need the Board of Health approval as well. Moved in seconded. All in favor? Aye? Thank you. Let's move on to the public hearings. Item number A is going to be, we are not touching the number A. We are going to take no action.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, the, this is for the alteration of premises known as Cafe Italia. This was to schedule a public hearing for the alteration of their premises for their liquor license. They are planning to put a jazz bar upstairs, and they still are planning that. They just need more time to figure out some of the access, accessibility issues. So this will be brought back to us at some future date to schedule a public hearing, but they'll be not ready for June 26th. I don't even think they'll be ready for August, so, but we'll let you know. But it is going to happen. They just need to do a couple of things. So there's no action necessary on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is to set the schedule, a public hearing for outdoor dining for the bread shop for June 26th at 7:20. We have a motion? Sub moved. Moved, seconded. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing for the transfer of an all-alcohol liquor license from Karen's Restaurant to JRM, Inc., DBA Public House for July 10, 2017 at 7:10 PM. So moved, do I have a second? Moved in seconded. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Our next item is notification that Mr. Donarco did sign the warrant number 45 dated May 9, 2017. Warrant number 47 dated May 23, 2017. Warrant item 48 dated May 30, 2017. Warrant number 49 dated June 6, 2017. No action needed.
No action.
At this point.
Question on last point?
Yes.
Not that we haven't done a great job signing these warrants, but should we maybe designate a different person? You know, maybe have one-year terms of this?
If you are volunteering to sign them, going in and signing them.
I am not, but maybe we should entertain, you know.
If anyone is willing to take over the warrant signing, they can freely request to do so, and I will let them do so, but I'm not expecting anyone to do so. So again, it's out there if anyone wishes to do it.
If you want to continue doing it, I'm good with that, sir.
I think that if you want, Mr. Chairman, we would have to make that agenda item and would be appointed by the Board, as you were, just to make our audit happen.
Yes. If that's the case, I mean, I'll happily put it on the agenda for the next meeting and let the Board decide what they want to do. How's that? At this time, we are now on matters anticipated by the Chairman within the last 48 hours of the meeting, and we will go round table. We will start with Ed.
Thank you. Just two things. One is I know that the issue of Airbnbs have come, had come up at town meeting previously. Some people, there's been some outreach to me that there are a number of postings online for Airbnbs, and my understanding from the town administrators that no one has sought permission from the town to operate in that way. And so I think it's an issue that we should be tuned into. I don't know where we stand, Mr. Mullen, in terms of enforcement, but I do think that it's something that I would kind of put on folks' radar going forward. And the other is just, we talk a lot about the downtown, we also have Greenwood, and I know that has been a lot of inquiry in terms of how we can soften Greenwood. One, we have a lot of utility poles that are exposed, and two, we have very little in the way of trees or any other kind of softscapes there. So I'd just like to put that out there again, more as a point for us to be thinking about going forward because, you know, Greenwood is an important part of our town, and I think we focus a lot on the downtown, but I want to make sure that our expansion is all the way down Main Street. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
I attended a funeral service this morning for a remarkable young man in a remarkable family. family, and I really watched the town come together, you know, to support this family. They've done it for the past three weeks. So with everything else going on, you know, just kind of sit back and reflect, and, you know, sometimes it goes in the blink of an eye. Thank you.
Nothing in particular, but just to add on to Ed's point on the Airbnbs, it definitely is, we have a lot of attention on that now, and certainly enforcement is really the next step, next step in the right direction. There's a growing number of Airbnbs, I think there's between five and 10, depending on which site you're going on, and that's definitely an important issue going forward we should definitely give attention to. Agreed.
I just wanted to thank all the organizers of Festival of the Lake this weekend. It was an amazing day. Thank you to all the nonprofits who participated and represented our town. And then I just wanted to give a special thank you to Marion Cohen and her leadership for the Wakefield, Linfield Chamber as Executive Director. She is stepping down, and I just wanted to thank her for all her work. I appreciate Annie Duvall coming and talking about the dog bite. I think to have a graduated step assessment for dog bites makes sense. For our bylaw committee, I know Melrose has one, so unfortunately it took her time getting bit to bring that to our attention. And I also, you know, unfortunately, we've, Wakefield's been through things like this before. I think we're at our best during these times, the sense of community, and in addition to the devastating loss of Zach Frank, we had Daniela Benedetto, Logan Dunn, and the Osichuk boy within three weeks, all similar ages. Zach was a little bit older, but, you know, the young members of our community are really struggling right now, understandably, but we do, we should be proud of our community for coming together for all families.
Very good, thank you. Tom?
Just to let you know where we are about Airbnbs. The problem is that it all depends on how your bylaw is written. No two bylaws are written exactly the same, and almost all these bylaws were written before Airbnbs were a glimmer in anybody's eye. I'm going to be doing a trial in Land Court in July on behalf of Linfield with respect to the one potentially grandfathered property owner who is doing Airbnbs. That's the property where there was a murder about a year ago during an Airbnb party. After that, town meeting in Linfield cleanly and clearly forbade rentals of less than 30 days in the single residence district. And so far as I know, this is the only property owner who may claim that he was grandfathered. In Wakefield, we tried to establish a nice clean regime that would forbid Airbnbs in most places and allow them only with a special permit, and that was voted down by town meeting. So now we're left with our old bylaw written at a time when no one was thinking about Airbnbs or short-term rentals. And I don't want to suggest that it's ambiguous, but, you know, there's room for play in the joints because we didn't adopt a modern, unambiguous bylaw.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, I can do that right now. I think on your paper on your desk in front of you was a letter I received today from the Westside Social Club Fourth of July Committee. This is clearly a document that came in that the chair could not anticipate 48 hours ahead of the meeting. The Westside Social Club for years has traditionally handled the Fourth of July events, the children's events, the doll carriage parade, et cetera, and the band at night and the fireworks. They have food concessions located around as well. What is really great about this here is that the Westside Social Club Fourth of July Committee and the parade committee have agreed that they will work on all of those food vendors together. So they'll be working together, they won't be like, this is your spot, this is your spot, you know, which was kind of a nightmare for my office for the last few years. So right now they're working together, I'm very thrilled about, and they've done a great job. So what I would like, the board, what I need the board's approval for tonight, which is appropriate because we're having our logistic meeting regarding the Fourth of July celebration Wednesday of this week, that the Westside Social Club is requesting the use of the commons beginning at 6:00 AM on Monday, July 3rd, and that's when they set up and they give everything to Wednesday, July 5th, ending at 6:00 AM because they do some breakdown and what have you. The actual events will be held on July 4th beginning at 7:00 AM and ending at approximately 10:30 PM. It is a great take, it is Americana in our town, they do a wonderful job. And if you've seen any of the young people with their bikes or their doll carriages, they really are excited, so if you need a lift that morning, come down and watch them do that. So I would need approval from that, Mr. Chairman, as we have for years.
So I'll entertain a motion to grant the request by the Westside Social Club to put on the events of the Fourth of July. So all in favor? Aye.
I'm a member of this club, so should I be upstanding from this vote?
You're a member? Are you a director?
No, just a.
That's okay.
All right, so aye.
Thank you. Mr. Mayo, you have anything?
I had one other thing. I had reached out to the board about having a strategic planning, long-range planning session. I've heard back from a number of you. I had two dates at that time, the 22nd and the 29th of July. It's a Saturday, sorry about that, but I'd like to have you out for a morning, four quick hours, and then we can have lunch or something. I also reached out to the facilitator who I'd like to use, and August 19th is also a possibility for him. I'd like to have the whole board there. I know not everybody could make it on the two dates that I put out there, but if we had to do a vast majority, I would like, I really would like to have everybody there if possible, so I'm throwing those dates out to 7:22, 7:29, you've already seen, and August 19th.
The 19th, I think, is the Italian festival. I think that might be.
Is that the Italian festival? Well, I guess that we can't do that then, okay. All right.
Unless you want to have it at the piazza.
That was the other date that he had.
I have a little glass of vin while you're doing this, I don't know.
I don't want to be out of the country, do I, Tom?
Okay, yeah, you had told me the 22nd was good for you. Maureen had told me the 22nd, and Paul said the 22nd was preferable. Ed wanted the 29th, anybody else?
22nd's good.
22nd was good. Tony?
Yeah, right now, fine.
Fine. Okay. Most people seem like the 22nd works, Colin?
I'm sure.
Okay. I mean, it won't be just one day anyway, there'll be a lot of homework. So I'll reach out and I'll see if there's anything else I can come up with, but that's what it seems right now that I have. Okay? That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I just have a couple of items that we briefly touched on during the meeting. The forum that we set up for the 21st.
Yep.
And that will be a discussion on group homes within the town of Wakefield. We have Senator Lewis planning on being in attendance.
And both of the reps.
And both of our reps. So we can begin to promote that.
Yep.
With the flyer and on the website.
Yep.
And then get the word out to the public that we are having that at the Savings Bank Theater at 7:00.
At the high school.
At the high school.
Yep.
So that'll be our first forum going into this year to discuss the concerns around the group homes.
June 21st?
June 21st.
Yes.
If Paul or Jason or.
Donald.
Donald can't make it. My concern is, I can appreciate a lot of neighbors are going to speak out against it, but to have someone on the other side that explains the legal and statutory duty perhaps that's out there, that, you know, we need to be prepared for that.
Right.
Having a forum of just people concerned, which I understand, I've had homes near me at various times, isn't going to work if we can't speak back to what we might have to.
We've addressed two of them right now, Donald and Senator Lewis, so.
We have spent a fair amount of time with that, with the legal issues, both federally and statewide. 48, Section 3 pretty clearly allows some of them under zoning, and there is federal statutes on certain type of them, so yeah. This is really to get, I wanted to, really want the reps to hear.
Absolutely.
This is what we're looking at.
Absolutely.
You know, one of the questions comes up is, well, how come Wakefield has so many and Linfield has none, or none to speak. Well, most of Linfield's on septic, so there's a bedroom restriction that we don't have here that causes that, so.
Okay.
I think we want to hear something from the neighborhood, and have our reps here because we do need some help with this.
Absolutely, I agree.
So speaking, continuing with the forum concept, if there's an idea out there from the rest of the board that they may think that there's a hot button item that people are asking a lot of questions for, that we could potentially combine with another item to have a forum on, please let me know, and then we'll try to set up the next forum, say within three months after that one, so to speak. If your constituents are asking you questions, you say, you know something, I'd like to have more information on that, present it, and then we'll try to work on something else to discuss this way. At least we're getting the people to be, come forward with their questions and try to address what their concerns are, instead of using Facebook and having multiple comments made. On your sheets, you have a correspondence from the real to trio for the extension request letter, so if you have a minute, please review that. Next board meeting is June 26th at 7:00 PM. I would like to also make a comment about the services this morning at St. Joe's for Zach Frank. A great outpouring from the public. I mean, there wasn't a seat to be had in that church, the standing room only on there, and I'm going to put the request out to the public from that service. Turn your front light on and leave it on overnight. It's just, it's a symbol in support of the Frank family, so that'll be my request. And if there's no further comments from the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.